I would like to reconvene the August 14, 2017 special meeting of the Sonoma City Council. I think I'm looking at the wrong agenda. Uh, our city attorney, do we have a report out today from closed session?
Well, actually, thank you, Mayor Henley. The council met in closed session regarding labor negotiations and there was no report out. Thank you.
And I don't think my agenda got updated, but this time we will do the Pledge of Allegiance and I would like to ask Mr. Jason Walsh to step to the podium to lead us in the pledge. All please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we get started with the first item, I think I do want to turn it over to our city attorney to explain why we have no general comment at this meeting, general public comment.
Oops, sorry about that. As council is aware, this is a special meeting this evening. The Brown Act specifically Government Code Section 54954.2 and 54954.3 speak to what occurs at a regular meeting. And each of those sections require that the public be allowed to speak on items both on the agenda and off the agenda at a regular meeting. So that's what we generally refer to as a public comment time. However, the section for special meetings, which is, whoops, sorry, which is Government Code Section 54954, or 54956, provides that the call and notice of a special meeting shall specify the date, time and place of the special meeting and the business to be transacted or discussed. No other business shall be considered at these meetings by the legislative body. Those sections read together have been found to require that no public comment on items not on the agenda, certainly public comment on items on the agenda, but no public comment on items not on the agenda is to occur at a special meeting. Since this is a special meeting, not a regular meeting, the staff in preparing the agenda packet has left the public comment portion off of the meeting, but certainly the public is, has the opportunity to speak to the items that are on the agenda as each item is called.
Thank you for that explanation. And my agenda did just update, so now I can see what's supposed to be happening. Can I get a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Agramonte?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Councilmember Harrington?
Here.
Mayor Henley?
Here.
Thank you.
Item two is the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. Dedication? We will take one step back and we actually have a meeting dedication today. Ms. Agramonte?
I apologize. I've been sort of organizing myself here. I would like to dedicate this evening to Rose, this evening's meeting to Rose Millerick, who passed away on July 27. She was married to Major James Millerick and her, and also her family. Rose is preceded in death by her husband, Major James Millerick, also known as Jim, as her cowboy. And her sister Sylvia Sebastiani, she is survived by her daughter Pamela Helen and her two children Elizabeth Stuckey and her husband Cameron Stuckey, Patrick Helen and his wife Jolena, Jolena and also Michael Miller, her son, Michael Millerick, and his two children, Kerry Millerick, and her husband Zach and Sean Millerick, and his wife Florida, and many grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one from Ms. Harrington.
Okay. I would also like to dedicate this meeting to the young woman who died in Charlottesville. Her name was Heather Hyer, and she was H-Y-E-R, and she was an activist who was going out, as we all know by now, to stand up for what I would consider American values. And she was sadly killed at that protest. And I think that our meeting today and all of the discourse we're able to have, whether we agree or not, is a testament to what a great country we live in. And so this one is for her.
Thank you. Item two on our agenda is the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request a specific item to be removed for separate action. At this time, the council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Do we have any questions or anything to pull on the consent calendar? This time, I'm going to take it out to the public for public comment. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for a motion. Mr. Cook?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar 2.1.
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion. We have a second. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Agramonte?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Mayor Henley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 3.1, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action to Adopt a Resolution Upholding the Appeal of the Planning Commission's Decision to Certify a Final Environmental Impact Report Prepared for the Hotel Sonoma Project, Requiring That the EIR Be Revised and Recirculated. This time, I will hand it over to our planning director.
Thank you, Mayor Henley and members of the city council. The Hotel Sonoma Project has been undergoing planning and environmental review for some time now, but most recently, a final EIR was completed. And following a public hearing that was held in April of this year, the Planning Commission voted five to one to certify that environmental impact report. The certification of an EIR is, in essence, a determination that it was prepared in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act and that it adequately discusses potential impacts, mitigation measures, and alternatives. This decision was subsequently appealed and is now before the city council. The council is, this is actually going to be the third meeting that the council has held with an item relating to the EIR. So just to review what's happened up until now, first, at your meeting of June 22, the council held a public hearing on the appeal. After hearing public comments and per the request of the appellant and the applicant, the council closed and continued the item for council consideration, deliberation, and decision to its meeting of July 19. On July 14, the project applicant submitted a letter requesting to amend and recirculate the EIR by adding additional alternatives, including consideration of an alternative with the residential component, and consolidating the changes made to the Transportation and Traffic Chapter over the course of the EIR preparation process. And then, most recently, at its meeting of July 19, the council discussed the appeal and determined that it wished to uphold the appeal and to require that the EIR be revised and recirculated. The main focus of the council's discussion with respect to areas of revision related to the alternatives analysis and to the analysis of traffic and transportation. In its discussion, the council focused on expanding the range of alternatives and consolidating and upgrading the traffic analysis. On a related matter, the council expressed interest in refunding the appeal fee, which is discussed as a separate agenda item tonight. And prior to taking final action, the council took public comments on the potential scope of revisions, after which the council voted five to zero to direct staff to prepare a resolution implementing its direction. And so that resolution is now before the city council. The resolution provides direction as to the areas of revision that would be implemented with respect to making changes to the EIR. In terms of the alternatives analysis, the resolution directs that, at a minimum, three alternative, three additional alternatives be reviewed in the EIR. One being an alternative in which approximately 50% of the proposed building area is residential and 50% is commercial. The second being an alternative in which a residential component of eight to 12 units is added to the project. And the third being an alternative in which the proposed restaurant is eliminated and the number of hotel rooms is reduced in a manner that, and in an amount, that clearly reduces the environmental impacts of the project in specified areas. These alternatives provide some specific direction, but they are general enough to allow staff and the EIR consultants some flexibility in defining details such as the mix of unit sizes in an alternative that includes a residential component, just to give an example. In addition, the resolution allows staff to include additional alternatives if that is found to add useful information. The areas of revision also address the issues identified by individual council members and address the suggestions contained in the letter submitted on behalf of the appellant from the Law Office of Rhodes-Zoeyum. The resolution further directs that the revised EIR, once complete, be brought back to the Planning Commission for review and action. On a related matter, after the close of the public hearing, the city has received correspondence suggesting that the EIR be amended to include a low-cost, affordable housing element and a greenhouse gases analysis that incorporates, that addresses vehicles' mile travel that will result from the hotels, employees, and tourists. Although that, these requests are not part of the record or the formal decision, the council on the appeal, staff has investigated the issue of the VMT analysis. And just by way of a little bit of background, the concept of VMT includes both the number of vehicle trips generated by a development and the length of those trips within a specific geographic area. And instead of measuring the performance of specific locations in the system, VMT measures the efficiency of the overall system, especially when expressed in terms of vehicle miles traveled per capita or per employee. So the level of service analysis looks at a specific intersection or specific intersections to determine performance at very specific locations. The VMT analysis is quite a bit more general and looks at the system overall. The analysis of potential impacts with greenhouse gas emissions in the EIR actually does include a VMT component. However, consistent with current guidance from the State Office of Planning and Research, this analysis focuses on trips by employees, not hotel guests. And as we have previously noted, both that being staff, the traffic engineer, and the EIR consultants, the metrics that are to be used to evaluate the potential impacts of a project in terms of vehicle miles traveled, this being in the area of traffic and transportation, are in flux. They have not yet been finalized by the Office of Planning and Research. That's the state office that's been charged with developing those guidelines. There's a set of draft guidelines that has been developed, but they've not yet been finalized. So for those reasons, the resolution that's before you tonight doesn't include specific direction on that issue, but as drafted, the language of the resolution does provide staff with the flexibility to address it as may be necessary, once we've had a chance to study it further. Our recommendation tonight is that the council adopt the draft resolution upholding the appeal and providing direction with respect to the scope of revisions to the EIR. And with that, I'll be happy to try and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any council questions at this time? Seeing none, I will take it out to the public for public comment. As always, please state your name and where you live and limit your comments to three minutes. Who's first?
Good evening. I'm Johanna Potry. I'm one of the appellants. My address is 621 Napa Road. We would like you to consider an alternative that reduces in size the number of rooms and reduces in size the size of the restaurant, perhaps 40 seats, to accommodate any of the guests in the hotel. It seems that item, alternative number two, I mean, if you are really going to take this literally and have the number of hotel rooms that have been proposed and add to it, you are going to have more impacts. So if you feel that you can't do more than three alternatives and add this fourth one of a smaller hotel with a smaller restaurant, I'd like to see you substitute this idea for number two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, David Iker, 1110 Loma Court. First, I want to thank the council for really reviewing and you can tell you read the material because you asked a lot of great questions. David, do you have the one, maybe you can make a little bigger. So I want to, I think, well, I support the resolution and I hope you approve it. There are a couple of items, it's actually more details of some of the items in there, that I hope could be part of it, a part of the resolution. Specifically, items three, C1, two, and three are slightly general, so I have some, a little more detail here. Now, if you look in here, you might be able to see, make out the parking lot for the Red Grape pizza restaurant there. Well, when I eat the Red Grape, when I leave, I make a left on First Street West, go up to West Nap Street, make a right, go to Broadway, and make a U-turn. Okay, so right, to get home. So right below the parking lot for the Red Grape is the exit, it's one-way out, from the underground parking at the hotel. And below that is parking for employee and valet parking. And so when the valet parkers go to retrieve cars and bring it to the guest, they're going to go out First Street West and follow that same route. And they're going to, you know, because that's the quickest way. Now, the EIR details for a future, or with a project, said there would be zero U-turns per hour on Broadway there. So you can see that they did not take into account vehicles traveling from that parking lot. And the same thing for hotel guests. During peak hours, they will be directed to leave out that driveway on First Street West. And when they do, they'll either take the same route or if they don't want to make a U-turn, go around the plaza, affecting all the intersections. And so the next, and that also would impact from the valet parker, left turns. You get additional left turns into the, you know, the garage as the valet parkers come. And speaking of left turns, another thing that was failed in left turn analysis was to use the percentage of in, coming in inbound versus outbound in the driveway from the MacArthur Place study. And I think the MacArthur Place study, even though it was done in the springtime, it doesn't have the right for the total number, but it would have a good in and out, since a lot of people come back, guests come back after closing a wine tasting in the valley between 4:30 and 5:00. And finally, in terms of pedestrians, they, it assumes that they'll cross the street once and disperse. And I really think that, as you know, and I do often, that they will circle the entire plaza going across all intersections. So I think that should be included in any further analysis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, City Council. Fred Alabach, 19550, 8th Street East. I'd like to speak a little bit to the greenhouse gas and vehicle miles traveled. I made a lot of comments on that in the initial draft EIR. And that would apply to hotel guests, you know, at the state level. If it's in flux, it's certainly in flux at the county level with the California River Watch challenge of the Climate Action 2020 Plan. And that was the basis of the challenge of Climate Action 2020, was that the transportation footprint was not full cost accounting. It was artificially prescribed and only limited to certain things. So for sustainability of greenhouse gases, which is a very important issue for us, and given that our country has withdrawn from the Paris Climate Accords, it's really on us to, to take these measures seriously and do as much as we can. I hope that the California River Watch position will be adopted by Climate Action 2020 and that the full cost accounting of the transportation footprint will be taken into the figures for CEQA and approving of different projects, including this one. And so that's, that's what sustainability is based on, is greenhouse gases and climate change. That's really the basis of all of that. And so vehicle miles traveled in transportation is the biggest impact of greenhouse gases. So to account, fully account for that really makes sense. And I would encourage you, as you go forward in this process, to, to think about that vehicle miles traveled in terms of full cost accounting and full transportation footprint of this project and other projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilwoman Larry Barnett, 637 5th Street East. I'm going to be brief and just say, I very much appreciate the effort and language that's gone into the crafting of the resolution. I think it covers virtually all of the issues that we were concerned about. And while there obviously are some, some issues in terms of details and kind of fighting one's way through the weeds that will emerge as this process goes through, I think the, the resolution also contains options and opportunity for the city and the staff and the consultants to adequately address these issues. And I have confidence now that everyone really sees how sensitive this matter is and how important it is to members of the community. And, and frankly, how important it is to the applicant that this EIR be done as well as it possibly can be. And I very much appreciate, you know, that concession and attitude on their part, that, that I just, I'm looking forward to your approval of the resolution and are moving on to the next phases of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this matter? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for discussion and possible action. Who's first?
I have one good question.
All right.
This is for Mr. Goodison. So some of the detail, you know, we heard drilling down the metrics that we'll use and, you know, looking at left-hand turns, that will all be done as part of, it's not necessary to be part of this resolution. Is that correct?
Well, I can't guarantee that there's going to be perfect agreement on all of the assumptions that go into this revised EIR. And in fact, I probably can guarantee that there won't be. But we're certainly keeping track of all of these comments and we're not going to ignore them.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution upholding the appeal of the EIR. Second word.
I'll second that.
Okay, first we have a second. Is there any further discussion before we go to a vote? I will make a few comments that I was pleasantly surprised with the resolution. I thought it captured almost everything that was discussed and certainly all the, the salient points. And while I do realize there's some details still to be worked out, I think that, I think this is something that perhaps everyone can be happy about moving forward. And if there's no further discussion, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Agramonte?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Mayor Henley?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Item 3.2, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action on a Resolution Refunding the Fee for the Appeal Regarding the Certification of the Hotel Sonoma EIR and Authorizing the City Manager to Process the Refund. And we will begin, says Public Works Director. Are you a public work, well, we'll start with Mr. Goodison because they're pointing at him.
Thank you, Mayor Henley and members of the city council. I think the background on this item has already been discussed, but just suffice it to say, as part of your discussion of the appeal, as mentioned previously, council members also requested that staff agendize for consideration and action to refund the appeal fee. And the resolution that's before you would accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any council questions at this time?
No question. David, how many refunds have we done in the last five years?
I cannot answer that. I don't know the answer to that question. I mean, I can look back and find out. I know that the council has done it a couple of times, probably less than five, but that's definitely subject to going back and tracking it down.
Thank you.
All right. I'll take it out to the public for public comment. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for discussion. Mr. Cook?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution of the city of Sonoma, refunding the fee for the appeal regarding the certification of the hotel project Sonoma EIR.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further comment before we vote? And I will make a short comment that I feel like particularly in cases like this, where it's people from the community who are coming forward on behalf of the community at large, I think that it is important to offer a refund when they are successful. And with that, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Agramonte?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
No.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Mayor Henley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 3.3, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action Regarding a Request by Councilmember Harrington to Schedule a Council Discussion to Review the City's Contract with the Sonoma Valley Visitors Bureau, Including Termination of Contract and Reallocation of Funds. We will begin with our city manager.
So for council and community, as you, we've seen this from time to time, the council has a policy that if a council member wants to bring forward an item to ask his or her colleagues to agendize and have a conversation, this is the process that occurs. So what is before you is a request to agendize from Councilmember Harrington to schedule a discussion that would review the city's contract with Sonoma Valley Visitors Bureau, including termination of the contract and reallocation of the funding. So the request in front of you is not to have a conversation about the merits or to engage fully in the substance of the request. This is a question of, do you want to schedule a time to have a conversation? And that is what is agendized for this evening. And so with that, as the, just for a little bit of background, the city does have a contract that was entered into in July of last year, a three-year contract with the Visitors Bureau to provide a variety of services in terms of visitor center, different tourism pieces, et cetera. And with that contract, the city provides $100,000 to help support the visitor center and those activities, in addition to providing a rent, a dollar a year rent. And there is some additional background in terms of operating costs. And again, but if council decides to have this conversation, staff will provide back and more information. So with that, we'll turn it over to Councilmember Harrington who made the request, so she can present her perspective to her colleagues.
Sure. So in light of our upcoming discussion regarding the TID, the funds, the Visitors Bureau carries out the work of the TID, as we know, to promote tourism here in Sonoma. And I think it's appropriate at the time that we consider the way the TID funds are allocated, the amount of the TID funds, and basically our contribution to the Visitors Bureau and the tourism industry, that we consider all of the pieces at the same time. And one of the pieces that I think we should consider is the city's allocation of $100,000 to the Visitors Bureau for their work. Certainly, they have performed a number of services and I'm sure they would talk about it at that time. But I think in order to have a complete conversation about our support of the tourism industry and what we're doing and what our priorities are, that that's an important part of the discussion with the TID, is our funding, our additional, over and above the TID, our funding of the Visitors Bureau. funding of the Visitors Bureau. So I would like to have that discussion at the same time, so we can give a picture to the community about what we're doing. And I think it's important, $100,000, just for the record. If we were to spend that on recreation, we would increase our recreation budget by 70%. And we have a really tight budget, so I would like to discuss it.
This time, are there any council questions? Okay, I will take it out to the public for public comment. Please state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Larry Barnett again. In the 12 years I sat where you're sitting on the city council, we didn't have the rule that you have in place, or the custom. If a member of the city council, who was elected by the people at large in this community, decided in his or her wisdom or interest that a matter was of such importance that they wished to put it on the agenda, it went on the agenda. It didn't require discussion, it didn't require a majority of the council to have the non-discussion before the discussion about the discussion that they might have. It was simply a matter of trust. And to me, that was a beautiful and appropriate process. There was a time when I was on the council where there was some discussion about a different approach. At one point, the then mayor, who shall remain nameless, advocated that nothing should be able to be put on the agenda without the permission of the mayor. We had that discussion, and it was soundly rejected by the council majority. And the agreement was to stay with the system we had in place, which is the people place their trust in their elected leaders, and we therefore place our trust in the elected leaders doing their job judiciously. Not bringing things to the agenda willy-nilly just because they think it would be fun, and not bringing things to the agenda because they want to hammer the other members of the council with it, or any other reasons that one could come up with to think of it negatively. It was purely a matter of respecting the people who are elected and respecting their opportunity to represent the citizens in the way they best feel it can be done. This rule was adopted by the city council at some point after I left the city council. I don't know why that was, but it's within your power to reverse that. And unfortunately, given the current circumstances, I do hope that one of you will place on the agenda the willingness of the rest of the council to discuss whether or not you can go back to the rule of just placing items on the council agenda if you are a sitting member of the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chris Petlock, 426 Napa Road, Sonoma. I'd like to, I came here specifically to state what Mr. Barnett just stated. You know, in the several years I've been watching this, you know, month after month, the agenda is full, absolutely full. Well, how does all that get on there? If you have to request to talk about, talking about what's happening next, how does the rest of this happen? I'm beside myself with figuring it out. I mean, I read the minutes, I try and keep up with all this stuff. How does all this stuff get on the agenda? It is beside, it's, it's just crazy. So does this stuff just come to you and you just deal with it as it comes? Because it doesn't seem like it's coming from any of you, because we haven't seen you discussing what's to come next. I'd love to hear an answer. I think we'd all love to hear an answer to how this happens and why we see so much go on up here that we just don't understand how it got in front of you and why you're not dealing with the things that I think the citizens want to see you deal with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, David Eiker, Loma Court. And I know one other source of income from the Visitors Bureau is memberships from hotels and restaurants and such. So I'm not sure what percentage of the budget that has come from, but that's, it is additional source. But I think that should be put on the agenda. I guess one of the options was to put it, to discuss it during the next budget, but then it'll kind of get buried within the overall budget discussion. I think it does deserve a little bit more discussion than just part of the budget. So I, you know, do support agendizing it. And also, I think, I agree with Mr. Barnett that whether you agree or not with changing something that as a courtesy to your fellow council members, that if something is not just, you know, hey, let's talk about aliens coming and abducting the general of layo statute, well, you know, allow it to go on the agenda for discussion, not only for yourself, but for the public. It provides the public, you know, the input on the subject. And I know I have a lot to say on it, and others do. And so this is one of the items that people are concerned with, the tourism and the concern with the money spent. And they, there's lots of things people like to have the city council spend the money on, recreation, affordable housing, just a lot of different things. So please vote to agendize the, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Fred Alabach, 195508 Street East. And I found councilmember Harrington's rationale for wanting to put this on the agenda to be very reasonable and compelling. And I think also the fact that balancing residents' quality of life and tourism has been a council goal for the last three or four years, that this is, this is a very pertinent thing to put on the agenda. And, and I, I won't discuss the substantive issues that people would discuss if it was on the agenda, but I think that there are a lot of them, and that it would be very worthwhile for the community to see you put it on the agenda so people would have an opportunity to, as councilmember Harrington said, see all the different pieces together, see how it works, and have the council have the ability to provide some oversight on an issue that the community is clearly concerned with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Henley. Council, James Cribb, 1061 Broadway. And as you know, I'm currently chair of the Planning Commission, but I'm speaking to you tonight as a private citizen and a small business owner in town. And I really just have one question. I don't understand why councilmember Harrington is so intent in doing damage to small business in this town. She's wanting to defund the Visitors Bureau. So what impact would that have? Well, fewer visitors means fewer people spending fewer dollars in Sonoma. And I don't know if anybody's checked in with anybody around town, but I'm not sure if Lauren Steven at Sign of the Bear, for example, would say, what's the impact of having five, 10, 20% fewer people visit their store every year? Jordy at Bump, little small mom and pop winery, if there ever was one, what's going to be the impact to him? His wife has two small children, if there are fewer people there in his tasting room? And not to mention the artists who display their art in his tasting room every month. Or there's Sophia at Backsheesh. You know, she was a high school student, worked there, bought the business. Retail businesses require foot traffic to succeed. Is she going to be happy when there are a few people walking on the sidewalk outside her store? I don't think so. So, I mean, we, we heard it just now, people talk of this balance between visitors and locals. So far, the only balance I've heard is taking things away, taking visitors away. I've not heard proposals come forward to attract new businesses to town, create a tax improvement district, create new jobs, fill the long vacant commercial space we have. And what are you going to do to replace the tax dollars without burdening the citizens? So I think until you come forward with some replacement ideas, that you shouldn't be talking about taking something away from this community. And I, as a small business owner, know I will be impacted. And so just because you find it inconvenient to find a parking space occasionally, or maybe nav across town, I don't think you should be taking this away. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cribb?
My name is Johnny Westham. I am the executive director of the Sonoma Valley Visitors Bureau, located at the Carnegie Library at 453 First Street East in beautiful Sonoma. I want to thank you for allowing us to speak this evening and allowing us to have this debate, and for all the supporters that we have here for the Visitors Bureau and the funding that we currently have. The Visitors Bureau appreciates the value and the longstanding relationship that we have with the city of Sonoma, which extends over 30 years. Visitor service is an important role in this community. And in 2016, we saw over 25,707 walk-in visitors to the Visitors Bureau on the plaza. And we fielded 8,766 phone calls and emails. We managed the official website of the destination, created community-based programs, and represented 355 member businesses, which 190 or more are located within the city of Sonoma. We have accomplished all this by a committed group of 52 volunteers, 12 staff members, seven which are visitor service representatives who are helping the community and the visitors on a daily basis, a board of directors, which is comprised of local people employed in a variety of industries. The Bureau can provide these services and local experts because of the funding partnership with the city. If this contract were to be terminated, the current level of visitor services could be affected, and the location of the visitor center could also be affected. The Visitors Bureau contract was unanimously, unanimously approved in a 5-0 vote in 2016. Four of the five sitting council people voted in favor of this contract just one year ago. Our services have grown over that year, and we provided a higher level of support and a higher level of service during that time. The Visitors Bureau relies on city funding, funding from the Sonoma Economic Development Board, and the Tourism Improvement District to accomplish the goals, objectives, and needs of these different funding sources. As you may have read in the newspaper recently and in the contract, the city will offer the Carnegie Library space to the Visitors Bureau for $1 per year after the credits are exhausted, which in 2010 amounted to $65,000 in which the Visitors Bureau overpaid to the city. Since then, we've been paying a rent, a rent of $511 to $597, which is the current rent that we have today. In addition to providing customer service to the visitors in the community, the Bureau has partnered with the city of Sonoma, the police department, to address tour buses who bring day trip visitors to Sonoma. While the Bureau does not contract, solicit, or have a relationship with any bus operator from outside Sonoma, we are contacting each business to educate their staff on city issues, policies, and procedures, which include drop-off, pickup, staging, parking locations. We enjoy working with and supporting the city on a variety of efforts and look forward to exceeding the expectations of the current contract and working toward common goals that support the quality of life in Sonoma. We respectfully request that this contract not be considered for termination or go to additional council meetings for that consideration. As mentioned, we value our relationship and agree to work with the city of Sonoma to further the betterment of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael McNeil, 1335 Dual Drive. Honorable members of the city council, good evening. My name is Michael McNeil, and I am the general manager of Hospitality for Chateau St. Chin Winery in Kenwood and Bull U Vineyards in Napa. Additionally, I am proud to speak to you as a board member for SVVB. I would like to take this opportunity to address the matter of reviewing the funding for the SVVB by the city of Sonoma. Tourism is vital to the success of all of the businesses in the city and valley of Sonoma. All of us rely heavily on tourism, not just the hotels, wineries, and restaurants, everyone. As stated in the local mission of the Chamber of Commerce, the mission is to, quote, "provide essential resources for businesses and cultivate relationships to develop, sustain, and enhance a diverse, resilient, local economy," end quote. Likewise, the mission of the SVVB, a completely separate organization from the Sonoma Valley Chamber, is to, quote, "serve visitors, members, and our community by promoting Sonoma Valley as the premier travel destination with the purpose of enhancing its economic vitality." The key difference as it relates to the matter at hand in this public hearing is, as Johnny Westham stated in a letter to the city manager, is, quote, "The SVVB is committed to the city of Sonoma and the partnership beyond the contract. As evitable, as, excuse me, as a vital economic resource," emphasis on resource, "for the city and business community, the SVVB aims to provide exceptional customer service to all who seek destination information." As it relates to the chamber's mission, the SVVB too provides resources to the local community and businesses. In the previous fiscal year alone, the SVVB's employees and volunteers have provided the community with the following resources: nearly 27,000 walk-in visitors, 220,000 website visitors, 2.8 million Facebook reaches, 9,000 inquiries personally handed by the volunteers and staff of the SVVB totaling over 3 million resources. The employees and many volunteers who have a passion for all things Sonoma and Sonoma Valley spend their valuable time fulfilling our mission at the SVVB nearly 365 days a year and do so proudly, tirelessly, promoting all of our local businesses. As a board member, business manager, and resident of the city of Sonoma, I am proud of the employees and volunteers of the SVVB. Most importantly, I'm proud to say that these employees and volunteers always keep their eyes on the prize, our mission to enhance economic vitality. Without them, economic vitality will be negatively impacted. In conclusion, I leave you with the following. By cutting the funding to the SVVB, you therefore cut the means necessary, uh, excuse me, the means necessary that work to provide over 3 million resources to businesses in Sonoma and Sonoma Valley. Given this, as a council-
I'm going to give you about 10 more seconds.
Thank you. As a council, you're totally confident that your partnership with the chamber is going to be able to fulfill the following partnership goals with 3 million less resources: assist and promote business retention and expansion.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McNeil. Thank you very much.
George Thompson, 311 Nicoli Lane, Sonoma, California. The Sonoma Valley, first of all, I want to support that you guys put this on the agenda. It's at the core of some of the current problems that needs to be talked about. The Sonoma Valley Visitors Bureau does two things, and only two things. They coordinate the collection of information, and they disseminate it. That's what they do. Boy, do they do it well. It's quite a vital organization. They disseminate their information to visitors, they disseminate it to local residents, they disseminate it to travel writers, publications, and other interested parties. This description of their membership organization is from their own website. I would like to see, and I want to say to Mr. Cribb, who spoke a second ago, that I am a small business owner, and I don't see this resolution hurting Sonoma at all. I see it helping the vitality of the residents, not necessarily 350 hospitality-related businesses that are members of the Sonoma Valley Visitors Bureau. I think that the hotel taxes and some of the membership fees can be looked at to help subsidize the Bureau. I was kind of curious today, before I came over, what a hotel room would cost me in Sonoma in two weeks from now. The lowest price I found was $205, and the highest price was $550. I always tell my friends to stay in Petaluma at the Motel 6. I think we need to take a deep look at this situation, and I've been in the Sonoma Valley Business Visitors Bureau twice since I moved here in '88. It's not really serving me. So I think perhaps they could get creative without city money. I know, I know, I'm getting into the issues of actually what would happen if you guys put it on the agenda. But to summarize, I want to say, I'd like to see it put on the agenda, and I think it'd be really good for Sonoma to look at this issue. I think it's at the core of what a lot of the residents are, are feeling in terms of this whole issue between residents' quality of life and tourism. Voila. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's an interesting one to follow. Okay, Mayor Henley and city council, good evening. My name is Bill Bloom, and I'm the general manager at MacArthur Place Hotel here in Sonoma. I also serve on the board of the Sonoma Valley Visitors Bureau, and I appreciate you allowing me the time to share my thoughts on this issue. This marks 30 years that I have been living and working in Sonoma Valley in the hospitality industry. And for 28 of those 30 years, I have volunteered to serve on the board of the Visitors Bureau, including two, two terms as the president of the Visitors Bureau. I feel my greatest accomplishment and the thing I'm the most proud of over these years is the partnership we have built with the city of Sonoma and the Visitors Bureau. And this is why this issue has hit me so hard on a personal level. I truly believe if this partnership were to end, I think it would be devastating to the city, not from a financial standpoint, but for ending a 30-year-plus partnership that we've had with the city of Sonoma. As the city's budget has increased, so have our efforts to continue to grow the TOT and sales tax revenue, which make up 68% of the city's discretionary revenues, general fund revenues. Since 2012, when Sonoma formed the Tourism Improvement District, we've been able to increase the occupancy in Sonoma from 64% to 74% occup- increase the occupancy in Sonoma from sixty-four percent to seventy-four percent occupancy, a ten-point increase since 2012, and that has generated $1 million more to the city's general fund. That equates to $100,000 in general fund revenue for the city for every one point the occupancy goes up or down in Sonoma. For more than thirty years, the Visitors Bureau has operated out of the Carnegie Library. And for all of those thirty years, the city has had a contract with the Visitors Bureau to provide services to maintain and enhance the economic vitality of our community, and that is what we've done for all of these thirty years. For example, on this Monday midweek night in Sonoma, at MacArthur Place, the hotel I manage, we're eighty-five percent occupancy, and that's due to the group marketing efforts of the city of Sonoma and the Visitors Bureau. If our $50,000 group marketing budget was cut due to losing the visitor service contract, I think you would see a significant drop in midweek occupancy. And while Sonoma's hotels, shops, restaurants, wineries, and attractions all benefit from the efforts of the Visitors Bureau, there is no greater beneficiary than the city of Sonoma, which is why I urge you to continue the longstanding partnership we've had for more than thirty years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lynn Clary. I live on Rosalie Drive and I'd like to thank Councilmember Harrington for bringing this forward. This is a discussion that's needed to take place for a long time. And I'll just be brief, I have a lot of substance I can put in on this. I would love to counter some of the things they said, but I know this isn't the time. But I look forward to having this discussion later and talking to each one of you in depth on my experiences, my observations, and my notes that I see downtown. And I think there's a lot that could be changed here and it will benefit the Sonoma, the city of Sonoma, and actually it will benefit the tourists, even though some people don't think it will. I have spoke with some of you, but I'd like to speak with the rest of you. So I just say, this is a discussion that needs to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Wendy Peterson, six oh eight Second Street East, former director of the Visitors Bureau. So tonight I'm going to speak a little bit about we, and I hope you don't mind, Visitors Bureau, and I think you all understand our heart is, so, it's so funny that Bill said what he said because I have as my opening words, the enduring and endearing partnership with the city of Sonoma. We are your partners in every way in a tourism-based economy. We are the ones that are working in sync with you every single step of the way so that your general fund, our general fund, makes Sonoma the greatest place to live and the greatest place to visit. The partnership with the Visitors Bureau, that it is a contract, to me is the best part about it. When I was the director, I felt so grateful that every relationship that the Visitors Bureau had then and has now is based on a contract. So we have a contract with you, we have a contract with our members, we have a contract with the Tourism Improvement District, we have a contract with the community to provide in return for our services exactly what it is you need. And to be at your table, as we've been over these past thirty-plus years, whether it's at a city council meeting, whether we've had you at our board meetings, we understand that the funding that we receive from the city, we need to demonstrate how that is meeting the goals of the contract that we have with you. So I just feel like this is working. This is part of why Sonoma is so different than any other town, any other destination, because we're working as a team. We're making sure that we're all at the table talking about the ups and downs. So historically, in my tenure, we've been through nine eleven together, we've been through the downturn of the economy, we've been through where did these lights come from and who did it and how did that happen to make everyone feel so excited? And now we're entering sort of the next stage of how we're going to create this balance. But you have to understand that the Visitors Bureau is your trusted partner that you need as you approach all these issues in a tourism-based economy. So I urge you to continue the contract and again, let us work towards this future on what the future's going to look like with your subject matter expert-
I'm going to give you about five more seconds.
-at your beck and call. Thank you.
Thank you.
I love following Wendy Peterson. Love that. Thank you, Wendy. Gary Saperstein, one six nine two six, Eveson Lane, Sonoma. And I am the current board president of your Visitors Bureau. And I respectfully ask that you not consider canceling our contract and most importantly, our partnership. We value our relationship with the council and I have for many years, as Wendy was just saying, as a board member, I've always been proud of the relationship we've had with you, our city council. That partnership and relationship has provided a community service to the people who live in this town, as well as to the tourists who come to visit our amazing community. We work towards finding a balance between both as we strive to bring the best quality of life to the people who live here, as well as the guests who are visiting our community. I say "community" because that is who we are and it is what we've been since I've moved here twenty-two years ago, this Labor Day weekend. The SVVB has truly been a vital part of the community. People come from all over the world and every day, our staff, our volunteers, help steer them to every type of business around the valley. We are here for the local businesses to help them succeed day by day, month by month, year to year, and to keep our town thriving. With the loss of this partnership and funding, I fear we would lose part of that for our businesses that we want to support on a daily basis. So again, I respectfully ask that you not consider canceling this contract with the Visitors Bureau. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jose Luciano, one fifty Theodore Lane in Sonoma. I'm the operations manager for the Sonoma Valley Visitors Bureau. I'm here to support our organization as a staff member and also as a valley resident of eleven years. The Sonoma Valley Visitors Bureau provides services that are key to our visitors and support local businesses. We also provide employment to, like Johnny Westham said, twelve staff members. Additionally, we have a team of over fifty dedicated and passionate volunteers. And when I say passionate, I mean passionate. Some of them have been volunteers for over twenty years with the Visitors Bureau. So I do commend them for their dedication. The funds under consideration, if eliminated, would essentially tear down an organization that has become part of the community and the city since before nineteen eighty-six. I want to extend an invitation to council members and anybody else in this room right now who have not been to the Visitors Bureau to come in and see what we do, because we do more than you think we do. So open invitation to anybody, come and see me, you know, take you around, show you around, spend some time with the staff and volunteers, and see what we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patricia Cullen in four twenty-five Denmark. I'm not supporting either side in this, but I think you're just having a discussion. And I think that there are people in the community that I hear from, that diverse people, that are interested in our city council having a discussion. It doesn't mean that you're taking the money away from the Visitors Bureau. I hope that that would be part of the discussion and other people would be able to speak about that. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Huntley and City Council, Leslie John, and my address is eight twenty-four Second Street West. I'm also a board member of the Visitors Bureau for the past eleven years, a twenty-year resident in the town of Sonoma. And I've chosen to work here in Sonoma in the wine industry for businesses that do not distribute their product. So you cannot buy it online or distributed. And so my approach tonight is a little bit different, although I do support everyone who spoke on behalf of the Visitors Bureau. What I'd like to speak tonight about is the identity of Sonoma, and if we were to lose our funding, I believe we'd be greatly impacted in our ability to maintain the presence, the physical presence that the Visitors Bureau currently has in the Carnegie Library. So that is twenty-six thousand people who would not have a beautiful historic building on the Sonoma Plaza to go into and be welcomed by three to four different wonderful smiling faces. Sonoma, my husband spent twenty years on the Napa side and I've spent twenty years on the Sonoma side, and people constantly say how warm and welcoming Sonoma is. And I feel if there is no physical presence for the Visitors Bureau, then as Mr. Thompson said, we are disseminating our information and we might as well be a call center. We have spent years, thirty years, growing this partnership and it's something I'm incredibly proud of and have learned from Bill and Wendy over the years. And I would ask you guys to please proceed with caution and think about what a tourism-based economy is to each and every resident in Sonoma, whether they support tourism or not. It means a lot. Sixty-eight percent of the general fund is not something that's not black and white. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marilyn Good. I live outside the city limits of Sonoma, but I'm definitely impacted by the tourism, the amount of tourists. Some tourists was fine, too many tourists is not good for even your business, even you think it is. It's sort of you're going to get to where you kill the goose that laid the golden egg. And it's not just for the town of Sonoma, but the whole county is reeling with tourism. And there is a great need for diversity and to get a little more imaginative. And I think there's systemic issues with the Chamber of Commerce. If you go and look who runs the Chamber of Commerce, the National Chamber of Commerce, it wouldn't be the people that I would encourage to be connected with. And the same with the Farm Bureau. Some of these things that look so nice on the surface, if you go deeper, you'll find they're not such a nice organizations if you go really deep. And I don't know anything about the Visitors Bureau. I do kind of resent that the old library, Carnegie Library, is used for something quite as materialistic as the Farm Bureau. So as you can tell, I'm probably going against the tide, but I remember when Monterey was a lovely little place, darling place. It was just overcome by visitors and the destruction of Monterey. You just look there and see what it is. When you go visit Monterey now and then look at our town right now, and I like to call this a town, not a city, even though I know that's in your directives or whatever originally, but I think we need to value something more. Unfortunately, it's the way you get paid is through doing this kind of thing and getting money from the Visitors Bureau and the TOT tax. But it's a terrible way to run any organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and possible action. Mr. Cook.
Yeah, I want to shed a little light on today's discussion and kind of point out a few things that were said during a public comment. Tonight, all we're deciding is should we bring this up for discussion? I think that the city council has done a lot in the last five years. And the main reason is because we have a council goal session. We have it every year. It started with our past city manager, Carol Givinato, and it's continued with Kathy Capriola. If you look at the council members up here, there's thirteen years of experience on the council. I'm probably forty percent of that. I've been on the council for five years. All we're doing is we're taking a look at everything. And when people make comments that how does something get on the agenda? I was around when things would come on, like should we support the war in Iraq or not support the war in Iraq? The agenda was full. So this new process, which isn't really new because it's been around for a while, kind of came out of that. And the council goal session is great because a lot of things that come up, it might not say a council member's name on it, but we've actually asked for it to be on that year's agenda through the council goal session. And the reason I'm bringing that up is because I think it's a misnomer to a lot of people in Sonoma who think that, and I've heard it, that we're a no-do-nothing city council. I remember when Mayor Gallion, the year that I was leaving mayor, and she gave a list of all the things that happened the year that I was mayor. I forgot about a lot of them because there was a lot of things that happened. We have full agendas. I'm going to be supporting this tonight, this request, but it doesn't mean that I'm for or against it. I believe that the Sonoma City Council has told the city major that we want to look at everything. Every contract that we're in will probably be reviewed this year. I would hate to think that anyone would think that we or a member of this city council was targeting one individual or one group, because that's not the way it is. This is just the city council with a new city major and about thirteen years of experience. Ken Brown has more experience or has been on the dais longer than the five of us. So when you look at it that way, there is nothing wrong with us taking a look at everything. So the only reason I'm saying this is because I just don't want the rumors out there that we're thinking about, you know, canceling a contract without us having our due diligence and looking. And one last comment, the reason that the process is the way it is, is because it used to be you'd spend one hour, staff time would spend one hour on something that would have to come to the agenda. And I believe that like something like this agenda item that we'll bring back, hopefully, if we get the votes tonight, the city staff can spend the time and the due diligence because it is a big deal. And there's a lot that's happened for the last thirty years. So I just want everybody to keep that in mind. And no matter how this vote goes tonight, I just don't want to read in the paper on Friday that the city council is about ready to get rid of the Visitors Bureau and wants to kick all the tourists out of Sonoma, because I don't think that's what we're talking tonight. Tonight, we're just talking about a discussion.
Vice Mayor Edwards.
You can go ahead and put that in the paper, Jason. I just want to go into just a conversation about, when I saw Wendy's stand-up, Wendy and Bucky were walking down the street when I was having my first date with my now-wife, and now I have great kids that are here as well. We were walking to Cafe La Haye and John and Saul put me right up there on that table that's right in the middle on the steps because they never saw me date anybody in town and they wanted to make sure that I was visible. And when I think about what this community is about and how people are here and all the people I've gotten to know, and I don't know all of you out in the audience, but I know a lot of you, including Larry and folks that I've worked with over the years, this community was, always has been a tourist economy from forever. And, you know, I travel around a lot, my life doesn't depend on it, but this reminds me of, I work with, and I won't name the name, but it's a company that makes a lot of cheesecake and they have restaurants all over the, actually all over the country and around the world as well. And they were buying a product from me and it's mascarpone cheese. I was doing the work for a guy and the guy who was paying me to sell this cheese, it was about ten or twenty thousand pounds a month, it was a lot of product. And he said, "Well, we're going to stop paying you because, you know, the business is solid, we've already got it." And I said, "Are you sure you want to do that?" He said, "Well, yeah, sure, we can't really afford to pay anymore." So he stopped paying me and then I just went to my good friends who had another mascarpone company and I said, "Hey, I've got this great opportunity for you." And we switched the business within thirty days. It's, and the thing is, is that with all of my business clients, I work on a handshake. And this person I'll never work for again or never do anything for. And the people- And the people that we replaced the business, we've had it now for 12 years or something and it's worth millions of dollars in sales. So, and I look at this and I look at this conversation, we have a contract and it's only for a couple more years. And when I think about what gets done in this community and how much, how many dollars are generated here that are, that have nothing to do with tourism, but they're, it's the benefit of tourism. I think of the Montessori school teacher at our school, at the community center, we were there for a big fundraiser on Saturday night. And when I think of, see all the people in this community that are actually out there raising money, doing all of the things that they do. And they raised way more, probably way more than 100,000 the other night. And it sounds like a lot of money and it is a lot of money, but it's, it's something when I look at the value that is translated down from this, these dollars. I think of, back to Wendy, I think of the Olive Festival Dinner that we, that just got created by these guys. And my wife, being a banker, one of her clients was Narsi David. And Narsi David came up to this event and he would just yak about it on the radio and so on. And I don't know how you quantify those dollars. I mean, you, marketing people, real marketing people, I have a marketing company, but I'm not like you guys. But how do you, how do you quantify those kinds of dollars in discussion about the community? But what Narsi talks about is the food and the character back to the food. You have people like Alice Waters who comes up here and at Bobby Canard's farm to have her company picnic. You have all these wonderful things that happen all the time around here that, that the Visitors Bureau doesn't necessarily have to talk about, but just people in the Bay Area know it. They know that this is just a wonderful, true community here. And, you know, I don't have an issue talking about, but why we have to say, all right, now we're going to pick this apart. I look at that Olive Festival Dinner and I think of all the farm workers that work on, my friends that are in the olive oil business, and I have lots of them in town, how those farms are able to work 12 months out of the year because they've, the Visitors Bureau helped identify our olive industry here. And now instead of people having to migrate and move off, there's people that are working just different crops during the 12 months of the year. And I see that as it's a direct benefit really of what the Visitors Bureau has done. And I, you know, it's, and just the 50 people that are volunteering, what do we, I mean, who do we go out and fire first at the, of the paid staff? And then the 50 people that are volunteering, it's, people come here to retire. There's a lot of older people in this town. They like doing that sort of thing.
Look over here.
Sorry. I was looking at David. He's looking a little tired. I just feel that what, what this organization does is, is, has a lot of value that we just can't see by saying, all right, we're going to have another meeting, we're going to have the, same people are going to show up at a meeting, we're going to have this discussion again. And frankly, I don't, I see it in a different way from, for most folks because I work not in the industry, I'm not in the wine industry. But I, my food, I sell food to virtually every supermarket in the United States, every hotel, I mean, something that I have something to do with ends up just about everywhere. So it's, I'm interconnected with it. But I see that the, to just say, all right, we're going to just peel this onion back and we're not going to support the contract that we have. I mean, we have, we have a document that it was a five zero vote. And to rehash it, I don't want to say the words leaf blowers, but it feels like that. I mean, it's, are we going to just get into something that bogs us down? And a couple of speakers said, well, this is a council that's not getting anything on the agenda. But we frankly spent the two, first two years of my being on the city council on leaf blowers. And we spent, I'm sure, everybody argues with the numbers, but I'm sure it was well over $100,000 that we spent in staff time on leaf blowers. And we had a vote that was the difference of 19 people in Sonoma. I mean, I think when I look around at what people are, the discussions that I've had and people that rely on this economy, that frankly, we can't shed this. We, we own this economy and it's how we, how we work it, what we do with it. We were having a conversation earlier today about, you know, I shop the plaza, I shop, you can tell I dress at Iraldi's. But I spend my money in town. And the first conversation I like to have is people say, well, we need to have, we can't have so many tourists, we can't do this. I want to ask, you know, everybody, how many times does Amazon show up at your door? I mean, we, this is, this is something where we, this is what we have to sell, is a lifestyle and a community here. And I think that the Visitors Bureau's done a great job. Just this last time around, I think I pay a few hundred dollars a year to belong to it. And I don't really do anything with it. I don't take advantage of the offers to put cards out for different things because I'm just too busy doing other things. But I believe in the concept, so I'm just putting my donation to it because I believe in it. And if I didn't believe in it, I wouldn't have anything to do with it and I would just be saying, oh yeah, let's just, let's get rid of them. But I really think deep down that they do a fantastic job. And when I read, read through this contract or the agreement earlier and looked at all the statistics and things that they're doing, businesses are making decisions about coming to Sonoma. People are moving here because they're looking at those stats. And anybody who has, has any kind of business and they're going to, they're going to use those kinds of stats to look at what their market is, no matter what it is. So this is just something that I, I think that we have to take a step back and fulfill our commitment and really go back and let's go start talking to, which what I'd recommend is just that the council members go and talk to the merchants, talk to the people that are, that benefit from this. And I think it's, it's just about everybody in this town benefits in some way.
Ms. Agamonti, please.
Yes, thank you so much. I have a couple of things I have to say that I'm digressing from the issue. One is, I'm the president of the Sonoma Valley Women's Club and we've been talking about the Carnegie Library. And actually, the Women's Club went to Andrew Carnegie's for a grant and they and probably native sons of the Golden West actually helped to build that library, which I think is important history for us here. And it really was a place for people to gather. So I don't, I don't believe it would bother the founders that the Visitors Bureau is here, is there. The other thing I would like to tell everyone, I admire Amy Harrington so much. I've been in public service probably most of my life. I've been on councils, I've worked for legislators. She's the only one that can get anything on the agenda. I'm so excited to know you, Amy. Thank you. That's number one. The other thing is, you know, I think Johnny Weston and I have visited a lot and I supported him. We were the worst landlords because for, for you, took you, I don't know how long and maybe we, maybe it's happening now for tenant improvements, to paint, to carpet the Visitors Bureau. I don't know what status that is now. I think under Kathy Capriola, it's moving forward, which I appreciate. I pounded doors and said, you know what? The Visitors Bureau looks terrible. Thousands of people, this is the way they look at Sonoma, what it looks like. So I hope we've moved on behind, ahead of that. Another time I spoke with Johnny and said, Johnny, what's up with all the buses? So I sent him pictures all the time. And I said, do something about these buses. Okay, so guess what I found out? It's my responsibility, not the Visitors Bureau. Johnny Westham is doing the job that the board hired him to do to bring tourists here. It's, he, they didn't hire him to get rid of tasting rooms or tasting or wine bars. They didn't get him, you know, to ask police to control, you know, the things that are going on around, around town with people just crossing wherever they want to cross or stopping to take a picture and 12 cars are being held up. It's not the Visitors problem. I, I finally discovered I am failing. You know, I actually have turned into a fish wife because all I do is complain now. And maybe it has something to do with, with my age. I have no, no idea. But actually, I think that, I can't say the city council, we as a city are bad partners because I would say a large portion of the people who are complaining, were complaining about things the Visitors Bureau cannot control. It's us. It's the city council. We're the ones that have to do this. And so, you know, I, as I said, I think Amy's amazing. Honestly, I think I have to move in with you. You're so amazing because you get things done and I'm really, really excited about being involved with you. But you know what? We can't, the city can't do your job. You're the one that understands marketing and public relations. You're the one that makes us look like this star community that when I tell people I live in Sonoma, they tell me, wow, are you lucky? And I am lucky. I've been lucky for a long time. So when people are complaining about the parking and the buses, that's not the Visitors Bureau problem. It is not. You haven't start, you haven't done that. You're doing the job that you're supposed to. So with reflecting on this, I understand why council member Harrington would like to take a look at the contract. And here's the scary part, and maybe by some reason, it has to say Visitors Bureau, including termination of contract and reallocation of funding. So why wouldn't you be nervous about that? That makes common sense to be able to be nervous about that. So, you know, I have to say that I take that responsibility for not doing the things that I should be doing to, to work more on the buses. And thank goodness Kathy Capriola is actually looking for alternative parking. We are looking at the buses on the, on the plaza, which I, I thank her. I believe she also mentioned it's September. We, I think we're going to be looking at wine tasting slash bars. So that's our responsibility. And I can understand why people are annoyed. We have people in our, in our council chambers here who are passionate. There's nothing wrong with being that way. And that's what they're looking at. This is what they see. They see people, possibly too many people, too many cars, too many buses, all of those things, but it is not the Visitors Bureau fault. It is our fault. We need to control these things and we need to get busy on, on that. And so for that, I have to say I don't support this. I mean, there are other ways that we could do that, partnering with the Visitors Bureau as we move forward so they can adjust whatever they have to do when we say, maybe we'll set a limit on our wine tasting rooms and our bars. Maybe that's our future. I have no idea. But I just wanted to make that statement because I, Amy only brought up $100,000. She didn't say any of the other things people have said. She's not addressing that. She's looking at the budget. It has nothing to do with other things that have been discussed here this, this evening. So I appreciate your bringing it up, but I cannot support this.
So I just want to clarify what the item is that I want to agendize. It's not a criticism of the Visitors Bureau. It's not a discussion of should we have tourism or not? It's a question of fiscal priorities and can, who best can afford the $100,000 to support the Visitors Bureau? The Visitors Bureau has received more TID funds than ever dreamed of when it was formed. And the question is, is it still fiscally appropriate for the city to subsidize the Visitors Bureau? And if so, in what amount now that they are receiving more funds than was anticipated? It is for that reason that I wanted to have the discussion teed up at the same time as the TID to say, this is the universe of funds that exist for advertising, for talking to visitors, for all these things. And is it still fair to the taxpayers of Sonoma that they pick up $100,000 of that? And I think that is a question of fiscal responsibility that people want to have in town. It could be at the end of it that we say, hey, you know what? We looked at all of the services you provide and the contributing 319 members aren't willing to contribute any dollars towards that $100,000 deficit. And it is more fair that the Visitors Bureau get this $100,000 than that we spend that $100,000 on something else. There are dire needs in this city. We have an extremely tight budget. It is not a criticism of what you do. You are incredible professionals and everyone all over town recognizes that. But it is a question of priorities and is the top priority of the city to give $100,000 to the Visitors Bureau who has more money from the TID than ever imagined? Or is the priority of the city to say, now that we're doing so well, thank you very much, great job guys with the TID and you have all those funds, it seems fair that other things that are priorities that are being neglected be addressed? And I think that's a fair conversation and it's clear from tonight that people want to have it. And I think we should have it. I think we should talk about whether or not it's fair for taxpayers to subsidize the Visitors Bureau when there are the funds from the TID. And I'd like to have that discussion and I think that the people in the town want to have it too.
Vice Mayor Edwards.
I just want to add, add one more comment that kind of drifted out in my story. The, so what's happening right now is we've got about 1,100 hotel rooms that are opening up in Napa, Sonoma, not Sonoma, but Healdsburg in our region, in our sphere of influence. So we're going to get, competition's coming and some of the, I end up having these conversations with my banker friends about some of the hotels that might not be the higher end and the, or in the sweet spot of what people are looking for are projecting their occupancy rates actually to go down. So one of the things that I feel is extremely important is that we don't take the bat out of their hands to, they're going to, we're going to have to market this. We talked about recession earlier in closed session. It's coming. It's, we don't know when it's going to come, but if we, if we aren't thinking about that and we aren't thinking out into the distance, and then I think of that, that with the return on investment that we've had is pretty darn good. So that's just, I just want to leave that out there.
Ms. Agamonti.
So, thank you. I'm sorry for belaboring this, but I might even ask Amy to do this for me. I'm not being facetious. You know, we're talking about $100,000. We recently passed a budget here for the city of Sonoma. I voted against it because reserves, the issue of reserves was not really expressed. That's millions of dollars. So there's, for, with you have, when you have a reserve policy, you can decide to be prudent or hoard. I don't know where we are and I know that Kathy Capriola is trying to work with me on this, but to me, this is very important. It has, it's million, it's millions of dollars, not $100,000. And also, I, I'm not trying to, to say that what Amy is not bringing up is not important, but I am telling you, the reserve policy here needs to be worked on. And there is money sitting there for us to do things. And I, and I appreciate our city manager helping me with that. So I think it's a really important thing for us to remember. And I'd love people to come out in droves to just hear this policy and what's involved with the reserves that might be sitting there for us to do things for the city of Sonoma.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, I guess I'll tell you what I think. For the many members of the community who are concerned about the tourism industry and its growing imbalance, I just wanted to say that I hear you. We have a number of items that are slowly coming down the pipeline. Some are very industry specific, very business specific, and some of them are more general and more in talking about the economy as a whole and how we can diversify it and bring some more balance that way. And I know that this, this, these wheels of government have been turning a lot slower than many of us would like. And I appreciated all of the comments. Wendy Peterson's, of course, stand out the most. And I, you know, I've, having only been here for five years, it's always interesting to hear the different sides of people who've been here far longer than me. And I do perceive this very long-term partnership with the Visitors Bureau through all kinds of economies, good economies, bad economies. And it just so happens that I got here during a good economy, I didn't get to see what it was like, you know, when it was bad. And in working with the Visitors Bureau, I do think that they sometimes unfairly get put up, you know, on a stake as the symbol of the tourism industry. Whereas as we work together on the economy as a whole, I think that the Visitors Bureau has expressed an interest in working towards sustainability together. And I think that we need them as a partner to work together because they're our direct link to the city. And I think without them, it would become very divided between, you know, us as a city and them as a tourism industry. and them as a tourism industry, and sort of competing interests. Whereas I think together that we can, you know, acknowledge what the same page is and work together. On the other hand, I respect and support council member Harrington, and I don't think that it should take multiple years on the council to finally get to talk about the things that you want to talk about and the issues that were the biggest during your election season. And even though I know stuff is coming forwards about tourism, I think it is important to start talking about this publicly. And I think that taking a closer look at our relationship with the Visitors Bureau and talking about how we can use it to help our economy while addressing some of the concerns of our residents would be beneficial. So at this point, I'm not interested in putting termination of the contract on the table, but going into our next budget, I would like to take the opportunity to get a better understanding of our relationship and our contract with the Visitors Bureau and see that if it is matching up with the needs that we have at this point. And so I don't know if that falls into an option that we have today. So I would say that I would support the item up for discussion, minus the termination part, but in the timeline of, you know, maybe in January, before we move into the next budget cycle. So, I don't know if there's any wisdom from the table on the right.
Well, at this point, you know, if the action, it does, if there, the council may want to consider just taking a formal motion, so we have an action. You can, council member Harrington could make her motion originally, and council take a vote. The council also could ask, you know, could put up an alternative action regarding kind of this topic and timing of a scheduling or within a scoping of a future conversation. I think there's enough of how it's been noticed that you could also, as Mayor Hunley was saying, if you wanted to, to change the scoping of, to look at the contract maybe at a future time and just to scope it as to review and understand and look at and have a conversation with the Visitors Bureau, with the contract, without the termination, reallocation of funding. If you wanted an alternative action like that, that is within, I think, how this has been described. If council wants to have that kind of a conversation as well. But we would like some direction.
Wouldn't you like to try a motion? I could try a motion.
I mean, I'm happy to make a motion for the record to record the votes. I make a motion that we, the contract with the Visitors Bureau be considered at the same time as the annual report of the TID, and that the council at that time have the ability to cancel the contract and reallocate the funds.
Do we have a second? A second or? An alternate motion?
Right, so if this, if there's no second, then the motion dies for lack of a second, and then the council could consider an alternative, alternative motion.
Mr. Cook.
I'd like to make a motion for discussion and consideration of possible action regarding requests. To schedule a council discussion to review the city's contract with the Sonoma Valley's Visitors Bureau.
At a specific time or?
I would like it to be put on the agenda as soon as, as we felt that, you know, the capable, as soon as I think that staff could prepare that. I would have a hard time putting a date for staff, knowing that we do have a lot of other items up. But I would like to see it happen in 2017.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Can I suggest a friendly amendment of, after the Visitors Bureau finalizes their annual report, which I believe is this month, and has time to get their numbers crunched?
Yeah, within the city's contract with the Visitors Bureau, they are required by August 31st to provide a written report to the, to the city, and so we will have that by the end of this month. I think there's definitely some information, if council wants to have a conversation about the contracts and history of TOT, et cetera, there's a variety of, there's some information I'd want to put together for you before that came, would come back. So in terms of, we could definitely schedule that sometime in 2017, probably sometime looking at more October.
That's my motion.
I will second that. Madam Clerk, can I roll call vote, please? Councilmember Aggermonte?
No.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
No.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, motion passes three to two. And with that, this seems unceremonious. We don't have anything else. The meeting is adjourned.